Please to be going like three seconds.
Hi, everyone. Four o'clock has come, so we're gonna get started with our social innovation meeting of the month of September. I'm gonna ask everybody on the call to take themselves on mute while I read the executive orders. Thank you. So in accordance, in compliance and in accordance to the governor's executive orders 2020-7, 2020-10, and 2020-18, attendance at this meeting will be by remote means only. Instructions on how to attend this meeting and participate in writing in public comments will be provided on the Cook County Legisstar webpage on @cook-county-legisstar.com prior to September 17, 2020. The proceedings will be able to be viewed at our Facebook page on facebook.com/CookCountyMission. Today, September 17 at four o'clock. Bring comments of any kind of this item will be listed, any items that are listed on the agenda were accepted at seventhdistrict.office@gmail.com until 24 hours prior to this meeting. Bring comments provided up to 24 hours prior to this meeting may be read aloud or summarized at the meeting. Three minutes are permitted per comment, and we will be doing all efforts to make sure that all of the comments are read in their entirety. Copies of the agenda and items to be considered at this meeting are made available electronically on the Cook County website page, which is cook-county-legisstar.com. Please note that Cook County building located at 118 North Clark Street, Chicago, Illinois 60602, has reopened with restrictions to the public until any date that will be determined in the future, obviously due to the COVID circumstances. With that said, I will be asking Yessenia, can you please call the row?
Go ahead and call the row, please. State if you're here by saying present. Commissioner Anna Wajardo? Commissioner Anna Wajardo?
So I'm here, sorry. Trying to get to the mute.
Commissioner Anna Wajardo, present. Commissioner Carrie Thomas? Commissioner Carrie Thomas? Commissioner Thomas Eppson? Commissioner Christine Freeman?
Present.
Commissioner Freeman, present. Commissioner Harold Rice?
Present.
Commissioner Rice, present. Commissioner Harry Austin?
Present.
Commissioner Austin, present. Commissioner Howard Maltz?
Present.
Commissioner Maltz, present. Superintendent John Yonin?
Present.
Superintendent, present. Commissioner Chrissy De Laurentis?
Present.
Commissioner De Laurentis, present. Commissioner Mark Lane? Commissioner Mark Lane? Commissioner Elaine Eppson? Commissioner Morgan Malone? Commissioner Morgan Malone? Eppson. Commissioner Wendy Reimer?
Present.
Commissioner Reimer, present. Commissioner Sotchi Lespinoza?
Present, I'm sorry.
Commissioner, Commissioner Smenosha, present. Commissioner Sotchi Flores? Commissioner Sotchi Flores? Eppson. Commissioner Roger Cooley?
Present.
Commissioner Cooley, present. Commissioner Gary Agelpay? Commissioner Agelpay? Eppson. Commissioner Sol Anderson? Commissioner Sol Anderson? Eppson. Commissioner Patrick Brutus?
I am present.
Commissioner Brutus, present. Commissioner Karen Norington Reeves?
I'm all done here on behalf of Karen Norington Reeves.
Karen Malden, here as a and Alderwoman Maria Hadden?
Present.
Alderwoman Hadden, present. And Commissioner Anaya?
Present.
Commissioner Anaya, present. Here, you have Coram.
Thank you, Yessenia. I do want to add that Commissioner Sotchi Flores just joined the meeting, so please add her to the row.
Will do.
Thank you. With that said, are there any public comments that were submitted?
Here, we did not receive any public comments.
Thank you. We're gonna get started with the approval of the minutes of the August 27, 2020 meeting. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes.
So moved, Patrick Brutus.
Moved by Commissioner Brutus. Can I get a second?
Second, Sotchi.
I'm gonna, there was a few. I'm gonna take Commissioner Maltz's second. Any discussion on the matter? Any edits? Okay, all those in favor of approving the minutes of August 27, 2020 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, minutes approved. Thank you. We're gonna get started with our other items, but before we do, I just want to acknowledge, obviously, I have Yessenia from my office and Victoria as well from my office who have been helping me through the pandemic in making sure that we continue our conversations here with the Social Innovation Commission and obviously starting the last three meetings and chairing them. So I do want to acknowledge also that we just recently received a fellow for an academic year. Her name is Daniela Guerrero. She could not join us today, but she is a public policy fellow from UIC, and one of her priority areas in assisting will be areas that overlap with the Cook County Commission on Social Innovation. So therefore, just wanted to give you all a heads up because she also might be reaching out on our behalf, and we hope to be able to introduce her to you all soon. We're gonna get started with a general overview of my updates, and then we will go into some other matters that I know that some of you all have already been previewed to, specifically chairs of commission. So just wanted to give you a heads up on one of the biggest issues that we've been dealing with at the county has been the budget. So we know that there have been a lot of changes that have occurred due to COVID, as you all may know, and also that we've been highlighting in the past two meetings. These are areas that we've been focusing on as a county, but we know that regardless, it has impacted our budget in many matters. So we are about to, we actually already kicked off our budget season at the county. I know Alderwoman Hadden probably knows that because they started their conversations at the city as well. So there have been a few items that I wanted to make sure to highlight, particularly the Cook County Health Board already approved and amended budget. So that's gonna come now back to the Cook County President's Office and also the Board of Commissioners. So we're gonna be looking at some of those changes, and I'll be happy to report on that in the next meeting on any discussions in regards to any potential huge changes that will impact our health and hospital system. Primarily, obviously, because COVID, we don't know if there will be a second resurgence, so we want to make sure that our Department of Public Health and also our general health system are fully functioning and fully funded. In regards to the Cook County budget, our general budget, we, the president has scheduled her budget recommendations to go live on October 8th, so I'll be able to update you all as well on what that looks like. And we will be having departmental hearings the week of October 26th. Again, any other information, we'll be able to update that particularly pertains or impacts the commission. We'll definitely be reaching out. We do know that the county is expected to have a shortfall of at least $280 million, and we are preparing with the quote-unquote worst-case scenarios if the state falls back into Phase 3 or lower. So we'll update you all on that. Are there any questions in regards to the budget or any, any, you know, obviously, we don't have a lot of information available now, but again, that will, as soon as that becomes available, we will send it to you all. Okay, I don't see any.
This is Commissioner Cooley, just a quick question. Has the Social Innovation Commission ever made comment or analysis of the budget?
Have not, no. So we have a Cook County Revenue Commission that deals with the revenue side, and that is a separate commission, but we have not made any public comment or any recommendations from the Social Innovation Commission. And I think that if, at any point, if, once we look into the budget, if there's anything particularly that impacts any of the work that we're doing or that we hope to be doing in the future, that can definitely be something we can help and arrange. Any other questions? Okay, great. So now, this meeting, we do not have a presentation ready. You know, typically, we have a department or a partner come in and do a presentation on something that is impacting certain things that, again, we are so associated with or that we're working on. But I know previously, we had made it a point to have a meeting in which would be more of an open discussion of quote-unquote working meeting in which we can discuss and plan and collaborate. Obviously, that has been a challenge during COVID, and want to make sure that, although we are not, you know, in the same room, that we still have availability and space to talk about this. And one of the areas that we felt was very important and something that we discussed with many of you that were part of the initial conversations or briefings that we did a few months ago was how to plan ahead, how to be very purposeful with our work in a way that it could be very impactful in many, again, of the areas that we've been focusing on, like housing, or transportation, or economic development, et cetera, et cetera. So we thought that we should approach it now that we are at the end of, towards the end of the year, and we know that we're gonna be facing a multitude of issues and uncertainty due to, again, the pandemic to economic recovery and the ongoing struggle for racial justice. So we wanted to make sure that we took this meeting as a way to reflect and really build towards the path forward on what the commission should be working on or could be working on. So I think that today, we'll definitely be collectively looking at the work areas, and I know that my office reached out to the chairs to start kind of having that discussion. So I really want to thank each and every one of the chairs and the co-chairs of the different committees because you all really helped us, again, start dissecting the type of work that we want to be focusing on. So I know for some of you that are not chairs or didn't, you know, here maybe directly from our office, we did reach out to survey the chairs and reflect on, again, the previous strategic goals that were set forth last year. So we had an annual report, and there were some areas of focus that we, that were identified in 2019. So it was extremely important for us to connect back to what we were working on, how that has been impacted now because of COVID, or how has it either brought that issue forward even further? And then also, how do we either pivot or work towards a longer-term solution, which, again, is something that was reiterated multiple times in the briefings? So I'm gonna be asking Yessenia if she could pull up the PowerPoint, and what we'll do is, we'll get started with some of those discussions. Thank you. Okay, let's see if we can get to the next slide. Okay, so again, I'm gonna highlight the three areas that we're looking at. Number one, reviewing what was set forth as goals last year, again, which is what was highlighted in the annual report. Number two, an overview of the current policy areas, and then number three, the path forward to committee work. This was something, again, I want to reiterate, that was, that we want to focus on, given the fact that we do want to be purposeful. We want to acknowledge that there's a lot of things that we maybe personally are working on, but some of these areas also connect back to the Commission on Social Innovation. And also, it is very important that as we move forward, that our committee meetings have kind of a pathway, something that's guiding the work. We understand that looking at a strategic plan of some sort doesn't necessarily mean that everything gets set in stone right now. It's, again, some type of guide for us to, to help us with the work and prioritizing. So these are any, these are the three areas that we're looking at. And I do want to make sure that I say this, if at any point there is a question or you all want to discuss, feel free. Right now, I'm just kind of going over the background, but we will be going into a little closer into the different committees, and I would really hope that the different members of those committees can maybe chime in and really have some input into the conversation. Can we go to the next slide? Okay. So we're gonna get started with the Public Capital Committee. The first, there was two areas from last year that were highlighted. So the Lincoln Highway Logistics Corridor, the development project over there, the Fair Transit for South Cook pilot program. And then the current status that we see here is the Lincoln Highway Logistics is also looking for ways to make infrastructure investments. There's also opportunities for grants through capital bill and issues with high property taxes. In regards to the Fair Transit, we're looking at the ridership, which is a discussion that we started at the last meeting, is down 90%, and there is, you know, work on specifically developing the messaging and saving those transit expenses. Can we go to the next slide? Okay, so we also asked our Chair Superintendent Yonin to look at the opportunities and also the challenges. So because there is a, because, excuse me, Fair Transit, that opportunity is in funds that are used in new ways of doing the transit in the region. So I am gonna ask the superintendent to elaborate a little bit more on this opportunity, and hopefully, we can look at also the challenge that you highlighted for us. Superintendent, or Chair Yonin, would you like to chime in, please?
No, absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, and just, again, the opportunity that we have to be able to kind of come before this distinguished group when you look at how transit, as we mentioned, on the Metro Electric, but just overall, for those who, you know, have not been able to work from home, it's a small group that today, viewing all the different types of transit operators, that it's really the CTA bus that's only down about 50%, maybe in the best, they were in the low 40s. And again, that just kind of shows it as being more of a centered around the city of Chicago, that that one service line is the one that continues to be able to operate in a way that is, again, servicing those who cannot work from home. So overall, the opportunity that we have is, again, in social innovation, is we realize that, as I said last time, that what makes this region special is that it is well-served with transit. And now transit is experiencing this downward, you know, spiral of not only not being able to convince passengers to come back to use transit, but, but what's gonna happen with, is the city of Chicago still gonna be able to bring those job centers to be able to have this as, as the transit system today operates, being the spoke of everything coming into the city? But, but then, what we need to do is, is say, if we're gonna kind of look at these, you know, CTA metro pace and the services that they're providing, because they're gonna really experience some tough financial, economic times in the coming months ahead, what is the way to try to look at maybe doing transit differently? One of the ideas that we talked about is a simple fare card system. You know, why don't we have that? Why can't just one fare card get you on all three of those modes of transportation today? That's one technological type of advancement. But then things like, earlier today, Madam President had hosted in the Racial Equity Week a discussion, a roundtable discussion along the lines of what is happening in the transit space. And the mayor of Richston Park, for instance, said, you know, "We don't have any pace bus services." You know, Commissioner Miller talked about how there's three Amazon distribution locations that are being built, and where is the transit solution on, perhaps, some residents of the city of Chicago where the reverse commute doesn't really allow there to be a consistent train schedule and/or pace bus schedule along with the CTA to be able to have a dependable start time for those workers? And we're talking 3,000 to 4,000 new workers in and around this region that will be coming online next year. So again, I think when it comes to those opportunities, that this commission is really focused on being able to look at ways that we could be innovative of how do we grow the ridership? How do we bring the ridership back? And is there a new way that, again, today, we should be doing transit differently? Because we really are at that point where we can do this differently. So that's on the Fair Transit. I know Christie's also here to be able to talk a little bit more, if need be, on the Lincoln Highway Corridor. Again, that was a project that we embraced about how it really touches the other aspects of what the different committees are working on, and the opportunities that we do have with the capital bill is there is a number of earmarking type of competitive grants that will allow some infrastructure, like water, electric, and, you know, to address some of the flooding challenges that are in and around that corridor. But where is that leadership opportunity? What is that wraparound service-type ways that we can make these parcels a little more attractive? Again, I think with just some of the land and the value of a lot of the businesses that are starting to look at South Cook, this is an area that, once again, can be a very strategic place for business to settle, but, but that continues to be something we need to look at along with the property tax structure. So, so with that, I think that's just a quick summary, Madam Chair. And again, if any of the other committee members would like to jump in, I would ask them to jump in at this time.
Sure, thanks, John. So we're gonna go to the next slide, and that kind of goes into a little bit of the questions for particularly this committee. So our original idea was to figure out a way to meet with your prospective committee members so in the, in the quote-unquote Zoom rooms. Unfortunately, we cannot do that just to do the Open Meetings Act and some other things that we would have to be a little bit more careful with. So what we thought would be, you know, a second, better, I think, alternative was to open it up, obviously, for the members of that committee, but also if there's anybody else that would like to chime in in talking on, again, how we figure out strategically what areas and efforts we can support at that time. I'm sorry, at this time, we can do that. So number one, I guess, question that we, that we're, we wanted to highlight is, you know, what is, what is needed to support the current efforts? And then what are the new efforts that might be addressed or that should be addressed in the future? Again, given the current times, given what has happened with the pandemic and the potential future challenges that we may have. So I'll first ask the Public Capital Committee members, which I have on here, being Commissioner Brutus, Commissioner De Laurentis, and Chair Yonin, to chime in on that, and, and also to ponder on it, right? We may not solve everything, or we may not have everything now, but we may think of other things that at a later time, or if you all meet as a committee to discuss this so that we can, again, figure out a pathway for us to addressing these items. So I'll hand it over to anybody that wants to chime in.
So I'll go ahead and start. It's Christie De Laurentis with Suburban Mayors and Managers Association. As a member of the Public Capital Subcommittee, I just wanted to add and kind of you know, compliment Superintendent Yonin on his summary and identify that following, following COVID and civil unrest, I think it's magnified some of the challenges that disconnected communities have, not only access to jobs. And as Superintendent Yonin said, reflected earlier today, the President Preckwinkle had a panel, including one of my mayors and one of the suburban commissioners and others that were really looking at equitable transit. And one of the initiatives was really identifying kind of the cost mix, mix-match, mix-mash, what am I trying to say, match, between the quality housing that are near other assets, including transit facilities, often are expensive and then kind of price, price out lower-income households. So really trying to look at that. And so I think that's something that we're gonna be taking up and looking. There's some legislation that's been introduced in Springfield. So as an organization, SSMMA wants to, you know, we want to review measures that we think will strengthen our suburban community and also build upon the, what we see are the infrastructure assets that we have, which include our rail corridor. And then how do we work with our public agencies to kind of connect the last mile? I know Cook County's been taking the lead, Cook County DOF has been taking the lead on a lot of innovative strategies, and I, and I understand that at least in the last round of Invest in Cook, there were a couple proposals that we're really looking at that as well. So how do we kind of stand some of those initiatives up? In terms of the Lincoln Highway Corridor, I think that's another example of how does government really try to leverage the resources that they have and support private sector investments in a way that bring jobs and, you know, needed tax dollars to areas that have been struggling for a long time? So we definitely have been involved in that area. We are also looking at, are there, and I think we've reported out to this group. We are also looking at, are there, and I think we've reported out, uh, to this group uh, about the South Suburban Economic Growth Initiative and really trying to, uh, build not only a market, but, uh, work with partners, including the county, on initiatives that, uh, could advance a pilot, uh, project, for example, that would reduce, um, property taxes, et cetera, on municipal owned properties, once they come back on the tax road. So obviously their tax exempt now, we want to get them on as productive. And so how do we, uh, use, uh, tools that we have or create tools? So I'll stop there. I just wanted to make sure that everyone was, uh, recognizing um, some of these kind of more, uh, broad infrastructure initiatives that lead to, I think, uh, more robust, healthier communities.
Great. Thank you so much for chiming in on that. Um, can we, Commissioner Brutus, do you have any input that you'd like to share with, uh, with the commission?
Yeah, thanks for asking. I, I, I think this is wonderful, uh, first of all. And thank you for putting this, uh, back to remind us of the, the work that we have undertaken over the last year. And I would be remiss to, if I didn't say that, uh, under the leadership of not only you, Commissioner Anaya, but Superintendent Yonin, who's, uh, you know, shall I say brave leadership during this COVID time, uh, to kind of still keep us on track, you know? And, uh, focusing, I think, on the right, um, projects in the, in the overall greater county. And so I'm thankful that, uh, Commissioner De Laurentis has been able to chime in today on some of the things going on in the south suburbs with SSMMA. Um, and I, and I just want to say, I look forward to being able to provide more to this commission and this committee, um, in the days ahead, in the months ahead. Because, um, when I was asked to join the, this particular committee, I, I, I accepted because I thought I could bring, you know, some value. But COVID has really affected our ability to meet on a regular basis. And I think even, um, Superintendent Yonin will confirm that. But I think that there, now that we have the, um, the pace and the, the, you know, we've settled into a groove with the Zoom and the ability now to meet electronically, I'm very hopeful that we were able to get back on track and really, you know, provide what you need. Commissioner Anaya, you know, in your leadership of this, uh, in, of this commission, so that we can actually, you know, provide some tangible, uh, not only knowledge, skills and abilities, but solutions, right, to make the county better, to make the overall, um, mobility of people and commuters and, and our residents, uh, you know, in the county of Cook, moving into and out of the city as the economic hub of Chicagoland. But certainly I, I just, just want to, um, stand up our, our leader of this commit, of this committee, Superintendent Yonin, who's, who's just generally a good dude. And so, um, you know, I look forward to being able to work with him more closely on this and the work that we do, uh, you know, that we all do in serving the public on this particular committee. Thank you for letting me speak, Commissioner Anaya.
Thank you, Commissioner Brutus. And yeah, we'll definitely, uh, be able to compile the different things that were just highlighted. And, uh, again, we'll be working very closely with the individual, uh, members of the different, uh, committees. Um, because I think that again, there's so much, um, things that we can love, so many items and, and initiatives that we can definitely leverage. And there's also new ideas that you all bring to the table that will be very beneficial, um, in the long term. And especially, um, as we, we start, uh, figuring out strategic, uh, goals and, and timelines, et cetera. So again, appreciate, uh, you all. I'm gonna, can we go to the next slide? I'm gonna switch, if, are there any other comments in regards to public capital that we would like to highlight?
Hi, this is, uh, Kristin, Commissioner Freeman. Um, I know the city just released an equitable TOD study. Um, I have not had an opportunity to review it, but, um, and I don't want to kind of get too far into like the Financial Capital Committee report. But one of the things that I've really tried to impress upon the group is ensuring that we are in alignment with other agencies. And so from a standpoint of the best utilization of resources, if there's anything that, um, could be applied from that report or is applicable to the south suburbs, it may be something for the committee to review. I have not had a chance to look at it, so I don't know at all.
I, I, I definitely, Commissioner, you know, we, uh, excited, you know, that, that did come out, um, I think just literally two days ago, it's about thirty plus pages. I haven't gone through it all, but it definitely aligns a lot of the strategic initiatives that, um, you know, it is in as a region that we, um, could definitely look at and uphold. So we're very excited about commenting on that. It's, uh, for the rest of this, um, commission, if you want to know, there's a open comment period for the next thirty days on this particular report and really encourage everybody to read it and, uh, have those comments. And, uh, we definitely intend to make some comments to that.
And the, uh, the link was just posted in the chat column. I would also say that Metropolitan Planning Council is part of the panel today, presented, uh, some stats and figures that were pretty effective, uh, you know, to kind of crystallize where Chicago in the region was versus other metro areas. So might want to also look at that.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for sharing that. Great. Um, so we're gonna, uh, switch over to the Financial Capital Committee. So just to, um, refresh our memories, uh, the priority areas from last year were opportunity zones and opportunity zone funding, examining, um, equity in the policies associated with commercial and industrial tax incentives. Um, uh, also, uh, again, in regards to our, uh, opportunity zones, focusing also on the Lincoln Highway Logistics Quarter, which is, was, uh, something that both the public and the financial capital kind of were working on together. Um, and to understand how to reach out to government for, uh, tense, uh, tax incentives and resources. So the current status on opportunity zones, um, it looks like there are some concerns on the high, uh, tax rates that are there and, um, how they should be addressed. So that was something that was brought up. Can we move on to the next slide? Um, so here are some of the opportunities and the challenges, um, that were highlighted by, um, the chair, excuse me, the co-chairs of the Financial, uh, Capital Committee. So opportunities is to support, um, for asset and resource consolidation, support financial institution initiatives through policy, assist in reviewing Cook County initiatives, uh, to develop a continuum of services. And the challenges, um, is the coordination of rapid changing information. So I'm gonna ask, uh, co-chairs, um, Wendy Reamer and Kristin Freeman, if they can chime in and give us some context on this. And then also we'll open it up to some of the other, uh, members of the committee and also to the general commission.
Sure. Kristin, um, I know that you took the charge on kind of like putting this together on the template and everything. Um, so perhaps you want to begin with your comments first. Um, I do have some clarity on kind of some specific, um, uh, I think about four things kind of outlined that we want to look ahead to for this year, which is also includes the, um, Lincoln, uh, Highway Corridor. But we've got some real specific things we also want to work on coming up as it relates to the COVID recovery plan, the Cook County, and other things as well. Um, I don't know, Kristin, as far as looking back to the work we did on the, you know, to, to facilitate the Lincoln Highway Corridor, I, I think we just ran into roadblocks in a sense on that one.
Well, I, I think that's in the tax policy and the tax, um, situation that would be needed to fund some initiatives there, right? Right. And so, um, as one of the presenters for the Financial Capital Committee, Sochil's right-hand Mohammed pretty much came in and gave a presentation, um, on opportunity zones at Cook, in Cook County. And one of the challenges that were presented were high property taxes, um, within certain portions of the region. It is also an issue, um, as it pertains to just deal making in Illinois in general. So these are not necessarily things that are new because of COVID, but they will definitely continue to be impacted and, um, become much more critical issues. And so some of the questions or clarity that I think we as a committee are going to need is, especially with the, the discussion of saying the county has a almost three hundred million dollar budget shortfall. Um, if we are looking at trying to identify financial capital, what's really within the, the parameters of what we have the ability to do? So is there, um, should we be evaluating examples of creative incentives or creative deal structuring in the cases of the opportunity zone? And then is that, can the committee petition that to be actually pushed into law? Um, and what does that actually look like as it pertains to the rest of the budget? Because I know we don't necessarily, we don't exist in silos. So we can make recommendations that will impact other budget areas, but I want to make sure that we are, um, being as responsible in those recommendations as possible.
Yeah.
Okay. We could definitely try to get clarity on that as well, so that we're able to, um, help you all also determine the next steps on that.
Great. That'll be helpful. Um, looking ahead for this next year, um, we're going to continue, um, deepening and strengthening the county's, is resources and, uh, commitment to work our own co-ops. We had a really great success, um, the other year with getting, uh, recommendation published and, and the co-ops, um, you know, on the books and, and on a good foundation, but there's still a need, um, for greater participation of co-ops within the, the business system and all of that. So we're going to be working closely with, um, um, let's see, the Co-op Center and Anna, your organization, Centro de Trabajadores Unidos. Um, just to make sure that's on our radar as well and part of our, um, committees' strategies that we want to make sure we're paying attention to. Um, that the COVID recovery plan, I think, was just so interesting and helpful to be presented with. I really appreciate you, um, going through that with us. Um, and to me, that is a great launching point for our committee as well, to ensure that access to those resources and, um, you know, any opportunities for participation, those access points or, or application points are streamlined. They're easy, they're easily accept, accessible. And just kind of getting feedback from the many entities that are, you know, there and wanting to participate. What makes it hard? What makes it easy? What else do you need? So that's definitely going to be on our, um, topic going forward. And then, and then the, the final thing that I have here is, um, you know, Kristin just was so passionate about this too. And, and we spoke about this, um, before, you know, really fostering, um, community-led innovation for economic progress. And, um, you know, what still needs to happen with technical assistance, um, to the, the entrepreneurs and the creative people and the, the dedicated people out there that are trying to start up businesses and ventures and, um, you know, the ladder for economic success. What else can the county do to foster that strength and that innovation? Um, and, and, you know, that ground up type of world and process really needs to happen as well as our, okay, here are the things you need to do to access this and that. What can we do to foster that ground up innovation? And that, um, a rich kind of opportunity for people. And that, and to us, that's, you know, technical assistance and, um, really meeting these, uh, entrepreneurs and people where they're at, not assuming that, hey, here, take this course or take this, um, series of things, when they're like, nah, I kind of need something else. What is that something else that would foster that innovation and ability to so, um, that's what, what I have to say.
Great. That's a really good point. Um, I think overall, supporting local. I, I think that that was one of the main areas that the Bureau of Economic Development really were able to like launch right away was like the assistance to the small businesses. We know at the federal level, and we've discussed this before, that it didn't really allow for much of, or much assistance, particularly to really small business owners that didn't have a connection to the bank um, or to their lender in any way, uh, and how that really created a gap. So I, I can see how there's also gaps with other type of programming or any other assistance that could be there for the, some of the smaller folks that are entrepreneurs or that they want to develop, uh, more of a local, on a local, uh, basis. So I, I, I think that that would be a really great and good point that, that you highlighted there. Um, any other comments or suggestions that, from the other members of the, um, of the committee?
This is Sochi Flores. Um, thank you, Commissioner Reamer, for all your points too. I mean, it's, it is a very critical time that we're in and social innovation is going to be key because I think government across the board, nonprofits and philanthropy are all going to be strapped and for resources and really understanding that the need to collaborate and leverage one another's resources and expertise is more critical than ever. So innovation is going to be, um, instrumental as we try to address issues, um, and, and need of both residents and businesses. So we were very fortunate that we were able to, um, receive CRF funding, CARES funding to develop programs to address both residents and businesses for this year. And hopefully there will be additional funding that will come in subsequent rounds of CARES funding. But if not, then we're going to have to become very innovative and, and also ensure that we're assessing the impact of the programs that we have launched to determine what is it that we need to do in, in this upcoming year once the funds start to dry out and we still have these great needs. So having this group of individuals and this subcommittee to work with is going to be very critical. Um, I think many of the things that we've, we've noted here are, are going to be top of mind and something that we're all going to roll up our sleeves and figure out how do we bring in partners to try to continue to provide these types of services. Um, the, the other thing that I will also throw out there, like we don't have enough issues to tackle. But one of the things, and I know that, um, Commissioner De Laurentis will also possibly chime in because it's something that's been very front and center in our work recently is thinking through the issue of digital equity and digital equity specifically within the south suburbs. It's something that we've seen in the city, we've seen it in our, our most vulnerable communities. But specifically within the south suburbs and western suburbs of, of Cook County, we see that that is a, a very troubling, um, dynamic and something that the president, the administration is very focused on. But it's going to take many individuals, many, many organizations coming on board and being innovative to figure out how do we really address this in a substantive manner. Um, it's not something that we can just throw a bunch of money at, but it's, it's something that, that's critical. And I think that, eh, as we tackle all these other issues and we realize that digital equity is, is at the core of many of, of the issues that we face globally. And if we can address this in some fashion, and it's something that we're going to be working closely with, um, SSMMA and other entities, we want to be innovative. What else can we do? Who else can we partner with? What, um, what other organizations are, are, are doing something to, to make this, this link or help address this issue? Because we know that government alone won't be able to address every issue. So this is something that I will bring to our committee as, as we, um, look to address, um, some of those most pressing needs. as we look to address some of those most pressing needs that have resulted because of this pandemic. So I appreciate having this group of individuals that we can brainstorm and figure out how to bring different partners together to help address some of these critical needs.
Thank you so much, Bureau Chief Flores, for that input. Is there any other additional comments in regards to this?
This is Commissioner Freeman again. Just to address Commissioner Flores, I was on a call yesterday on behalf of a Chamber of Commerce within the city of Chicago, and it was a call that was pulled together by Representative Nick Smith. And one of the things that we did talk about was digital technology and equity. Years ago, I participated in a program called the Smart Communities Program. It was funded partially through the Chicago Community Trust, the city of Chicago. DCEO was a partner as well, and I think there was another philanthropic partner. That was a really good model that helped to roll out technology in the South and West Side neighborhoods of the city of Chicago. And what they did was mobilize local service providers. So not only it wasn't DCEO or SBDC people going into businesses, but it was local, smaller entrepreneurs that were doing these tech assessments. And so I do think that there are definitely some things that we can look at. And from your perspective and your expertise, aligning some of the additional resources from the philanthropic conversations that are happening as well. I definitely think, I know, as you said, there are a lot of things that we have to address, but that particular one, I don't think is a super difficult lift because there are definitely models in place that have had success in Illinois that we could easily reintroduce with funding.
And that's how I feel, like many of these issues are not a heavy lift, but it's just linking those right individuals, those right organizations or philanthropic partners to come together to address these in a comprehensive way.
Sachi, just to build on what you're talking about, this is Howard Mills. The digital equity issue has been at the forefront from one year ago, at least, at the point where the president, in her Equity Week speech, highlighted that as one of the three areas. And I want to make sure that the fellow, my fellow commissioners know that this is an area of, Sachi Flores has said, a great concern for the president. And the lift, so to speak, has been interesting. We began with learning exactly what was done before and what stuck and what did not. We interviewed people from smart communities. We were basically involved with a research project that I got the Oliver Wyman Consulting Firm to conduct the foundational research for where we were. This was pre-COVID on digital inequities, the three areas being areas of digital device and connectivity, digital proficiency, and ultimately, the digital well-being of our residents, specifically Black and Brown populations in the Southland. The disadvantage existed prior to COVID. It's been, as President Preck Boeckel reminds us, laid bare in all of these communities where you have students who are looking to, in households with multiple children, try to log on with limited broadband. And honestly, the competition that we talk about for help, how we lift up a region can be actually interregional. And so pulling a lot of government agencies together, you know, who speaks for one small municipality or school district in the Southland versus who speaks for the larger school system in, you know, the North section of Illinois? It's easy to see where a county matters and where we have had a great need that is important enough for everyone here to understand. It is front and foremost of what has been going on. There's a council, Sachi is aware of this council, the Council on Digital Equity, which has been called CODE. And it is an active council looking for these kind of partnerships. We're working on it, and I'm absolutely committed to filling anyone in this commission of where we are. And obviously, it's a priority. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Howard. And we are going to go, towards the end of the presentation, there are some initiatives that we think over, that overlay a little bit with some of the goals and some of the discussions that we previously had, have had with the commission members, but that are currently happening at the county side as well. So we're hoping to be able to compile some of these initiatives to be twofold, right? For the commission to be updated on the different initiatives that are currently being worked on and maybe to have some input on those. Because you all are experts in your respective fields, and it'd be very important to have that, have the commission also in some way be involved with that. And we're hoping that we can also have those individuals, those different committees, those working groups, et cetera, really come back to the commission and also rely a little bit on us as well. And again, that expertise that you all have. So I'm hoping that we're able to do that as well. Were, did anybody else have any other comments on what was just discussed? Okay, Commissioner Reimer, please?
Yeah, just a quick thing, you know, since the digital equity issue is, it really affects not just students, but small businesses and just everything. I wonder if we could put that on the agenda to have like a real briefing of what the county is doing about this, this code group, and even perspective on the city, what the city is doing. I know there's initiative with Ken Griffin, and I think it's AT&amp;T and the city. Like, there's a $40 million initiative, and they're saying every CPS student is going to have, you know. So there is a city big initiative that's underway. But yeah, if we could just think, put that on the agenda and get the latest and greatest, who's working on what, and, you know, so we're not duplicating or anything like that.
Great, we'll definitely look into that, and we'll be able to hopefully plug them in. Awesome. Any other comments or discussion points for the Financial Capital Committee? Okay, if there's anybody else, we'll move to the next committee, please. Human and Social Capital Committee. So with human and social, we saw that the priority areas set last year were Inclusive Employment Rubric, which was a project that was being worked on, the Economic Recession Prep slash Analysis. Quite ironic that the commission was, I'm sorry, the committee was looking into this prior to COVID. The Federal Reserve and the Center of Budget and Policy Priorities. So any type of other research tools. And leveraging the Cook County procurement. The current status looks at including a community wealth building language into procurement process and strategize on how to improve the workforce, the ecosystem in the workforce. Can we go to the next slide, please? And these are some of the opportunities and the challenges that were highlighted based on the survey. Opportunities is to address the racial wealth gap, focus on the shared ownership structures slash work co-ops, to promote universal broadband, which is something we were just discussing. Apply COVID-19 funding to Inclusive Employment Rubric to build resilience. Challenges that were highlighted is the loss of government revenue for services. Nonprofits are also struggling at this moment, and also the overall limit of resources due to the pandemic. So I'd like to ask if we can have the chair, again, provide some context on what was discussed in the survey, and then we can go into opening it up to the other members.
Yeah, and thank you to the other committees. I think there's a lot of really interesting overlaps. Already you can see universal broadband being highlighted here. And I think one of the reasons was for folk, the need for folks to be able to get back into the workforce and get up, you know, participate in programs. A lot of, you know, especially because a lot of centers where you'd go in person have been closed or hours severely limited or folks not feeling safe to even travel in person. But the same for even getting, accessing basic benefits like SNAP and other assistance programs are really now requiring being online as well. So there's a lot of overlap with that work as well. But some of the things, as you were highlighting, before COVID hit, one of the priority areas that had been, an area of interest was looking at what, how to better prepare the county's infrastructure for how it could help serve folks most impacted by a recession. You know, use, gathering the lessons from 2008, 2009. You know, and certainly, some of those things did come into effect a lot faster. Eviction, protection, foreclosure protections that kicked in a lot faster and were prepared for the kind of reaction. And then some of the immediate social service, basic human needs work and funding that came out really rapidly, you know, even by the end of March, early April, some of the fast business supports. But even recognizing that that, and some conversations as well is that, you know, the pre-existing social network, safety network wasn't enough to move folks out of poverty sufficiently in parts of the county. And, you know, now that's even more dire with the COVID recession. So some of the conversations have been around how to start reimagining a more robust social safety net that's not only keeping folks from falling down the cracks economically and not even getting basic human needs met, but what is more of a path, how do those programs start interlocking together to become more of a path for folks as a pathway out and up with a strong equity focus as well? So I think piecing together with some of the other programs is some of the work. And some of the ideas, very appreciative of you sending and gleaning the ideas from our survey. There's a lot come more depth about, you know, how do all these pieces intersect? Some of our committee folks were really talking about, you know, similar things to the, especially the financial capital, improving investments in Black-owned, business of color communities, entrepreneurs, making sure that those pathways are there, really recognizing that it's a 10-to-1 gap currently in the financing that goes to those businesses as opposed to North Side or white businesses. So really jumpstarting that to talk about pathways for wealth creation, but also making sure then that as folks move in the workplace that they are treated well and fairly, even in small, in small business contexts so that there's opportunities for moving up. So a lot of work there, but really trying to think more robustly about what is kind of a reformed or more expansive social safety net, especially that the county, city, and state have control over and not being 100% dependent upon what the status of the federal government is at any time. Knowing that there could be a massive pivot a couple of months there as well.
Great. Thank you for providing that context, Commissioner, or should I say Chair Cooley. So I do have a few other members. First, I want to make sure that I add to the role Commissioner Sol Anderson and Commissioner Jerry Agarkey both have joined us. So Yesenia, please add them to the role. But in regards to what was just discussed, so we know that some of the pivots that have happened during COVID are the ones that I just highlighted. I just forgot to go to this slide. So the leverage the networks of the committee members and identify stakeholders working on similar issues. So this is very similar to originally what you had mentioned in your, when you first started, your comments about that overlapping area. So I think that this overall is a good exercise so that everybody understands, everybody in the commission understands what the different committees are, what they're working on, and identifying those overlaps so that we can, again, work collaboratively and not completely in silos in the different committees. So that's going to be important as we move forward. I do want to hear from either Commissioner Sol Anderson or Commissioner Haddon on any other input, if they would, if they would like to include it at this time in regards to social and human capital, some of the things that have been previously highlighted. I don't see Commissioner Anderson in, and here he might have fell off the call. But Commissioner Maria Haddon, do you have any input that you would like to share with us? You're on mute, by the way. Okay, I'm having a hard time. I don't know if she's trying to speak. So we're gonna, we're gonna hold off now. I don't know if there is anybody else. I was just wondering if you had any other additional input that you would like to, for the commission to know on social and human capital, particularly the different issues that have been highlighted.
No, no additional input from me, and I'm sorry, I haven't been very active in the committee. Yeah, so nothing additional for me.
I do want to highlight a couple of other things. One of the, I can't remember if it's in the bullets, but really highlighting the government, Cook County procurement as an opportunity for...
Yes, we did include it on there.
Okay. And one event that's coming up virtually in the next month is the Cook County Food Summit, which is going to be online. We're partnering with the Department of Public Health on putting it on. And it's really looking into the good food purchasing policy, which came out of the commission a couple of years ago, which sets standards for food that's purchased by the county hospitals, jails, and juvenile facilities. And so there's been a lot of really good progress on the implementation of that work and a lot of partners who are working on the other side, who are helping to become suppliers or supporters of those suppliers to even sell back to those institutions. And so that's going to be a free online event, October 14th through 16th. So please take a look and feel free to promote that as well. And just highlighting another overlap as well, interconnecting public health goals as well as with economic and social impacts. The Department, the Chicago Department of Public Health just released their Healthy Chicago 2025 Plan today with a very strong focus on equity and a really strong look at, you know, they cite the transitory and development planning process as part of the work that they're emphasizing, really looking at making sure, you know, all the different ways a community can be healthy and making sure that one of the fundamental things that has to happen is economic equity before there can be public health in those communities for a lot of different, a lot of different reasons. So just highlighting that report as well, and that there could be some other things that are good overlaps of the work we're working on.
Great, thank you so much. We'll be sure, Yesenia, Victoria, if you can please include this on the comments, on the Facebook page as well, so that people have access to the link to, for the event, right link, so that they could sign up for the food summit. And just as it was highlighted by Chair Cooley, this was an initiative that started with Cook County Commission on Social Innovation. And I know that that's another area maybe we failed to include in here as well, is like keeping track of that initiative. We know that there were quarterly meetings happening at the county. There was inventory being taken place and a lot of great things, but obviously COVID has put a halt on that project. So just circling back with something that was mentioned in, again, in one of the briefings. So we'll definitely include that as well. Great, any additional or last comments on human or social capital? Okay. Harry, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I was just reflecting a little bit. We talked about the workforce ecosystem. I just wanted to stress when we think about that, we need to look at both sides of those coins, the supply side, which is the human capital side, and think about what really are the longer term issues in terms of preparing folks for the world to work as it is evolving. And I think everybody's conscious of that. But on the, on the demand side, I think there's, we've got to have a little more energy in terms of kind of really getting at the equity challenge in terms of some of the systemic resistance to marginalize and underemploy and often forgotten communities. You know, there's a rush to move them into what I would define as pigeonhole entry level types of positions and some of the service industry positions, but those don't necessarily have the type of sustainable lift that will close the wealth gap. So we've got to really weigh in and put our thumb on the scale in terms of all of the employer sectors from private sector to public sector to say, you know, think more aggressively about how you make opportunities available for new entrants into the workforce and not just simply lip service about that because we do have some dominant employers in this metropolitan reason. And we don't want them, if you will, to get off life on light on their commitment to hiring and advancing individuals and a supporter of equitable vendor participation and employee on co-ops and those other types of things that, that really drive community economic development. But we do have to recognize the role that some of our significant larger employers play in, in this marketplace.
Very good point. I appreciate you putting that because that's going to be important as we move forward to look at both sides, how to support again, the, the demand, but also looking at the, the supply and how to develop folks as well. And I really liked the piece that you mentioned in regards to the wealth gap and how to address that because ultimately to be able to better the communities and also the, the people living in the communities and to really push for equity, we, we have to figure that piece out. It really is, is an issue that has really impacted people, obviously across the country, but here in Chicago, we see it quite often when we go from neighborhood to neighborhood. So I think that that's going to be an important issue to champion and to look into. So thank you for your input on that end.
Thank you. And I would just want to add one comment that you brought up when you're talking about looking at different neighborhoods and that's getting people to rethink where their offices need to be, where their employers need, need to be, you know, big employers are good about showing the glitzy side of this city, but that's not where all the workers are unless your vision of a future is what happened in downtown Seattle with the present Amazon. If that's our vision of future, I don't think that's an equitable vision.
Absolutely. And to some extent, everything that we're, that we've been discussing is somehow connected, right? So when we talk about locating headquarters or their, you know, the different work, workplaces, you also think about, you know, the transit part and how to get people. So I mean, it, it really is full circle. And I think that it's going to be important that we work, you know, multiple areas at a time so that we ultimately, ultimately get to the goal. So, so again, appreciate the, the input and really bringing that, that issue to light in our discussion.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to move on. I know that we're already at five, almost 5:20, so I'm going to try to move along a little quicker now. The Intellectual Capital Committee, I know that our Chair, Morgan Malone, wasn't able to get back to us with the full information that we had requested. I know that she's working on it, but want to refresh memory for the rest of the commission members on the priority areas from last year. So it looks like we had as, as the two areas to increase public engagement by revisiting past presenters and trying to out there, looking into their work and how it relates to the county efforts. Also, participatory governance toolbox, which was a project again, to make county more accessible. So there, those were the, the areas that we were focusing on. And I will open it up to see if maybe Commissioner Mills, if you have any additional input that you would like to include in the discussion in regards to Intellectual Capital Committee and what we're looking to do going forward. What's, what are some of the areas that, that you would like to see in your committee?
Commissioner, was that directed to me? I, to Howard Mills?
Yes.
I had not participated in putting the agenda together with Morgan. You know, for me, my time became more limited because of the dedicated time required on the digital equity initiative. So I stepped back, although there are clear implications that I can hear from the members of this committee that there's interest for potentially the commission to look at some digital equity aspects. And, you know, my major concern is, I share with everyone, is the digital well-being of all residents, not just the obvious student population disadvantages. But when we get to intellectual capital, we're literally dealing with the elements and aspects of everyday life that were mentioned earlier by other commissioners, that is relating to your government, relating to your healthcare. All of these types of communications require connection, connectivity, they require proficiency in digital, and they have to be addressed. So I'd be part of what I do, and I certainly happy to report down the road on where we are with respect to certain initiatives and some public-private partnership development.
Perfect, thank you so much. Any other members or that would like to chime in on intellectual capital? Anything particularly that stands out that we would like, that we think would be good for them to look into or to strategize around? Okay, great. So we'll, we'll definitely circle back. I know Chair Malone was not able to join us today, but we will be circling back with her to see if there's any other areas that we can include into the committee. So before we conclude this portion, I wanted to give a snapshot of the, the current Cook County policy areas and initiatives that have been worked on. So most, some of these have been already, like for example, the economic recovery initiatives are things that the county already, in the Bureau of Economic Development already briefed you all on. We had a presentation by, by then, but there are different other things that I wanted to highlight because we do see overlaps. So one being the Council on Digital Equity, which is something we've discussed a, a few times already during the, the discussion on figuring out what the strategic goals would be. Contract, sorry, contact tracing. We're looking also at eviction prevention, foreclosure mediation and consumer protection, voting equity. And that's, there's a piece also on there for language equity as well in voting, disability inclusion, worker co-ops, property taxes. And also I would add on there, property tax incentives is something that we, that, that has, that is currently being worked on as well. And obviously the budget season, right? So looking into the impact of the federal system and obviously the loss of revenue and the impact that that will have. So the reason why I wanted to make sure that I included this is because some of the work and some of the ideas that have continuously been brought up are areas that the county is, is working on. But I do again, want to make sure that we make the connection with those either entities, bureaus, offices, departments, or even any of the working groups and seeing how we can also chime in and, and figure out what they're working on. So we're going to be, I, I know that it was requested to look into, you know, the, the internet accessibility stuff. So we, we might be able to make that connection and work again towards figuring that out. Right now, obviously this is areas that we, maybe a discussion that, that we may not be able to get through the whole thing, but some of the questions that I again, want us to ponder on is where do the priorities align with the Cook County policy areas? So I've highlighted some of them. What are the short-term next steps, the long-term next steps? And who needs to be brought in? So these are things that I, I can open it up right now and we can briefly discuss, but this may take a little longer, right? And if we're planning ahead, if we're trying to be purposeful and we're trying to make sure that there is achievable goals that we, we may need to discuss a little bit at length and obviously within your committees. So we've discussed the separate issues, separate areas and focus that the committees are looking into. Again, this is nothing set in stone as we have seen. And if there's something that 2020 has taught us is that we must pivot and, and make sure that we're addressing the, the issues at hand. So these are again, the areas that, that we would like to, to look into and, and the questions that we, we should be discussing and thinking about. So I don't know if there's any comments, questions either on this or anything that we previously discussed before we move forward to our next agenda item. Could you turn?
Go ahead.
Could you do the page back to list the areas? Okay.
And we can send all of this to you all as well.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think this is great. I mean, obviously I can see a couple that directly correlate to the financial committee. So that's, this is really helpful.
Yeah, we'll send it over. Sure, Commissioner Mills?
It's Howard. I just wanted, I'd be remiss if I didn't give a shout out to a member of the public who's attending right now this meeting. And they have been active, intellectual capital in the past, and I think will want to remain close. They are from the consulting firm Slalom Consulting, which in addition to the Oliver Wyman team, came in more recently to work on digital equity efforts and help with launching of code of the council. So Nolan Mims is on the call and I want to just give a shout out to Emmett Beckham.
Sure. Hi, everyone that's, that's viewing. Complete shout out from all commission members. Thank you for joining us and for all your continuous partnerships.
Thank you for that time. Thank you.
Great. So again, we will, we'll send this over and you know, I think these are the questions that, that would be good for us to discuss in, in committee. Or if you have, if anybody wants to share now on any of their suggestions or opinions on these, again, I'll open it up for a few minutes if anybody wants to chime in on that. All right. So before we move to the next item, I also want to give a shout out to our ex-official member, Pete Kretikos, who's on the call. He's also been very instrumental to us in helping us focus and identify areas of how to look into a strategic plan and has also attended almost every meeting. So thank you, Peter Kretikos, for being so helpful in, in all the work and in your advice that you've been giving us as well. Okay, so the next item on our agenda was committee reports, but I, I understand that we haven't been able to meet with our committees. So I think that one of our immediate next steps for the commission is to make sure that we are setting our committee meetings for, before the October Social Innovation Meeting. So I know the several chairs are already finalizing their standing meeting dates and working with the, the committee. So again, just a reminder to reach out to this, to my staff, once that's determined so that we can help coordinate those meetings and send the, the notices out and help you with, with setting those up. And also for you all to continue the conversations around the strategic goals that we've highlighted and some other exciting things that, that I'm sure you all are discussing. The, the, the final thing, I'm going to be moving on to item number seven on our agenda, which is new business. We have already been discussing the requirements of the Open Meetings Act certificate. So we're going to be, remind you all to send your certificate, your PDF certificate over to the office once you've completed so we can update our records. Additionally, based on the commissioner's manual that was approved last year, commissioners have, are able to have three absences per year, unexcused absences. So we'll be touching base with each individual member to determine how the attendance is looking. Obviously there, there's, there was a big gap that where we didn't have meetings. So I want everybody to be updated on their attendance and also we'll be addressing any concerns. So if there's any scheduling conflicts, we want to make sure that you all are able to, or that we're able to accommodate you all. And then if you need to send a proxy, I know Corey is, is a proxy today for Karen. So thank you, Corey, for joining us so that we can make these accommodations as well for you. So on a separate note, I just wanted to give a quick reminder, some of you all received the email, Cook County, this week is celebrating both Racial Equity Week and the Census, the whole countywide Census Action Week. As, and also we, we just started the celebration for Hispanic Heritage Month. So we, I know that again, you received an email with all these dates. We are about to almost close our, our weeks of both racial equity and also Census Action Week. So if there's still lineup, there's still plenty of events. And I've just asked you all also to push, we have 13 days left of the census. The, the census deadline is set for September 30th. And we know all of these wonderful things that we're working on and a lot of the specifically for the public sector that, of funding that we receive for schools, for, you know, the workforce, for housing, for food assistance is really determined on the census. So we'll ask you all to, you know, bring the message to your constituencies, your clients, that your partners that you work with, and just remind them that September 30th is the last day to complete the census. I'll open it up for any announcements that any members would like to share with the commission or with the general public.
Yeah, I don't know if you remember, one of the previous meetings, I announced a retail hiring initiative partnership between BMO and Cara. It was paused during the COVID and we have revitalized it the last couple of months. Yesterday was the hiring event and Cara presented, how many, 14 candidates and 12 were extended offers and all 12 have. and twelve uh were extended offers and all twelve have verbally accepted. Um, so now they begin like the trend, you know, the background check and the the everything like that, da-da-da. And then their first day um will be coming up soon. So the, it was a great success, bottom line. And um we'll be continuing to do this. Um, it's no longer considered a pilot. It's considered like something that BMO is going to be doing. So it's a really um uh hard work, but a really example of a a public um or a private business and a nonprofit partnership, really working together for a true partnership situation. And we're really excited about it. So just wanted to share that.
Great. Thank you so much for sharing that. Um, any other um announcements that anybody wants to share?
Um, this is Corey with the partnership. I have a quick update from Karen. I know that um at the last meeting, she shared about uh contact tracing efforts that the partnership is involved in. Uh, on Monday, we announced uh that the, we're going to be funding thirty-one community-based organizations in the city of Chicago that will be uh, you know, leading all the community hiring for um the contact tracer, the city's contact tracing effort. I just wanted to share that uh hundred and fifty people were hired as of Monday and we expect to hire close to five hundred um by the end of the month. Uh, the demand for these positions is incredibly high. Uh, but we've received over two twenty thousand interested applicants. And so I I think that speaks to the the high level of need um and the interest in good paying jobs or twenty dollar an hour jobs. And um we, because of that high demand, like we're we're working to shift people's interest to other opportunities that are available through our system and others. So um if anyone's looking for talented people, we have a a big list to promote to at this point. Uh, and then I just wanted to highlight two things that are where our work is aligning with the county. Uh, we've seen really like incredible community response to the pandemic where people are coming out and volunteering uh and working with the Bureau of Economic Development. Uh, and uh we're we're able to start funding transitional jobs for people that were volunteering to provide them with living wage jobs to continue to do the volunteering and and build up community support um during, you know, during the pandemic. And then with the Justice Advisory Council, we recently wrapped up the seven-month process um around building a re-coordinated reentry system for people coming home from the jail and Illinois Department of Corrections. And so we have really strong recommendations that we're making to the state and county around that, and we'll be launching a pilot program to pilot those recommendations. So we're really excited about that work. There's been a ton of investment and effort in that and it's part of a uh Department of Justice funded project that we did in coordination with the Justice Advisory Council Commissioner. Uh Austin has been part of that um council, so thank you, Commissioner Austin, and uh um, those are the, oh, and then just a quick plug. Uh Karen uh was on a um a short presentation with President Preckwinkle and Asie Gien earlier this week um as part of Racial Equity Week. And so that uh that video you can find on our social media. So for all the Sox fans out there.
Great. Thank you for those updates. Appreciate it. Um, anybody else? Awesome. Um, so with that said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Reimer, second by Commissioner Rice, uh discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Great. The ayes have it. I'm about to share the page for um the census. Uh, so everybody that is uh seeing us uh live can uh look at how they can uh complete their census. Um, and thank you, everybody, for joining uh the call today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Stay healthy, everybody.
Thank you.
Yes.
We will.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.